If we're all ready, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. David, would you like to give us the pledge here?
Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, oh, call to order and go caller.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Metina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spurrt?
Present.
And Mayor Turner?
Here.
Moving on to acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items? Oh, we have an emergency item. Okay, great.
So in order to put the emergency item on the agenda, we will need a two-thirds vote of council to do so. And for the record, I would like to explain that this relates to a application for funding from the USDA which the city only learned about today, which is after the posting of the agenda. And it requires response within two days. There is the need to act on it prior to the next city council.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Does any member of the public wish to speak on our acceptance of this item into our agenda tonight? If not, a...
So I would ask for a motion to place the resolution regarding USDA funding for a police officer, a police vehicle, on the agenda. We will need a two-thirds vote. I think the council...
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So Madam Mayor, would you like to put that on the agenda then after the walk bike school event?
Yes, please. So now we'll vote to accept the agenda as posted. Would you want to move the proclamation? Yes. Yes. If we could take the proclamation, category, section five, under public presentations and requests, if we could take that up after the adoption of the consent agenda, it'll... I'd love to assume that everybody's here for the entire meeting because you guys just can't get enough, but I'm guessing that we should continue the ongoing appreciation and move that up as a top priority.
Where are we moving it to?
We're going to move it...
Before the consent agenda. We're just going to accept the agenda and then go to the consent agenda afterwards.
Yes.
Yeah. There's no change.
Well, then let's do it before consent agenda. That'll work, actually. That works out better. Sorry. Okay. There. If you have any idea what I was talking about, I'm ready for a motion.
What was in that motion?
I would like to make motion to accept the agenda as amended. Do I do that as well?
I got it.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to do the proclamation.
We couldn't make them sit through the consent agenda?
That's another 90 seconds.
Oh, they do have to leave. Okay, that's a reason. I get it now.
Okay. So next item on our agenda, proclamation to read a proclamation honoring City of Lakeport Committee and Commission members and present certificates of appreciation to outgoing committee and commission members. Mayor Pro Tem will also be handing out City of Lakeport pins to our members. And so... Before we move on to taking action on the consent calendar, I'd like to publicly announce that last fall there were a consent calendar...
That's part of the consent.
Yeah. Seriously, maybe I'm holding today.
Reclamation.
She's new.
This is the proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport. Whereas volunteers are the keystone of the Lakeport community, enriching our town and improving the quality of life. And whereas the City of Lakeport is especially fortunate to have the services of dedicated, hardworking, and intelligent individuals who generously serve our city and do so without monetary or other compensation. And whereas the City Council of the City of Lakeport desires to acknowledge these contributions and honor those who have given up their time and talent to benefit their community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lakeport does hereby recognize and thank the members of the Lakeport Planning Commission, Ken Wicks, Michael Froyo, Michael Green, Harold Taylor, Suzanne Russell, and Kip Nor. That's a great idea. Would you please approach members of the Lakeport Planning Commission to accept your pins? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He said age before beauty, and that's why I'm...
That's right.
Always.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Parks and Recreation Commission, Cindy Ostrid, Ann Blue, Kip Nor, Suzanne Lyons, and Suzanne Russell. Please approach and accept your pins.
Standing for my wife with grandchildren in San Jose.
Thank you.
Double tip on you.
The Lakeport Economic Development Advisory Committee, Will Deschamps, Christine Hutt, George Lynn, Pam LaHarster, Penette Talia, Tyra St. John, Melissa Fulton, Denise Combs, Bill Eaton, Doris Viola, Terry Logston, Dan Peterson, and Andy Lucas. Please approach and accept your pins.
Thank you. Yeah, there we go. All nice and... I've got this damn shake right hand left. Thank you.
Next, we have the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, Frank Deloso, Ann Blue, Vicki Cole, Suzanne Russell, and Nathan Maxman. Please come up and accept our appreciation and your third pin.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
And last but nowhere near least, the Measure Z Advisory Committee, Annette Hopkins, Susan King, Tim Wynar, Dennis Rollins, and Nathan Speed.
Shake right hand left. Oh, left and... Okay, oh.
Thank you very much. We additionally have certificates for some of our outgoing commission members. Tyra St. John, who is not here with us this evening. Christine Hutt. George Lynn, who is not with us tonight. And Harold Taylor, who is not with us. Those people deserve special recognition in that they're outgoing. I could say myself that I've enjoyed participating when I go to meetings now with Christine Hutt for input is always very incisive, direct, fiscally responsible, and funny sometimes. Thank you very much. Not just Christine, but everyone. Thank you so much for all that you've given to the city. We appreciate it. Consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have waived reading except by title of any ordinances. Approve the minutes of the City Council regular meeting of February 20th, 2018, and the special meeting of February 28th, 2018. Approve the warrant register of February 26th, 2018. Adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Lakeport Employees Association for the period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2020. Adopt a resolution approving a compensation and benefits program for the City of Lakeport confidential employees for the period of March 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2020. Adopt a resolution approving the compensation and benefits program for the City of Lakeport's unrepresented management employees for the period of March 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. And approve amendment number two to agreement for services between the City of Lakeport and Margaret Silbera. Before we move on to taking action on the consent calendar, I'd like to publicly announce that last fall Governor Brown signed legislation requiring the City Council to orally report a summary of any council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers. Accordingly, before the City Council this evening, as part of Agenda Item 4.1, is a recommendation to approve a salary and benefits package for the unrepresented management employees. The unrepresented management employees consist of at-will management employees and mid-management employees. The benefit package before the City Council includes a 4% salary increase per year and technology allowance of $750 for mid-management and $1,500 for at-will management over the term of the contract. Also before the City Council this evening, as Agenda Item 4.1G, is a recommendation to approve an amendment to the city manager's contract. The amendment provides for a 15% salary increase and a 40% annual technology allowance reduction to $750 per year. That concludes my disclaimer. Does council wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Does any member of the public wish to speak on items on the consent agenda tonight? If not, take it back to the...
May I move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have any citizens' input tonight?
No.
Okay. Then we will move on to the council business. Authorize the chief of police and public works director to close portions of North High Street, Lake Shore Boulevard, Geiselman Street, Sire Street, and Lang Street, and also conduct traffic controls at other intersections along the route between the 1800 block of North High Street and the Lakeport Unified School District campuses on Lang Street on the morning of May 9th, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Basically, what we have going on is similar to what we did last October with the Walk to School Day, except that this year it's going to be expanded to a walk or bicycle to school day. So we're going to have our walk staging area at the same place at the High Street Shopping Center. And then we are going to have two other staging areas for kids that want to ride bikes. One's going to be at the old natural high school property. The other one's going to be at the grocery outlet, the shopping center where the grocery outlet is. So law enforcement officers in marked vehicles will meet with the bicyclists at the two locations, and we will escort them down Main Street to 16th Street and then onto the High Street Shopping Center before the final group moves on into the school. So what we'd like to do is have permission to close the roads around the school, as I cited in the staff report, for it's probably going to be close to an hour that morning so that we can move the final group into the school grounds. And then I won't need road closures for any of the bicycle escorts. We're just going to run that with at least two police cars per group and just control traffic with our lights. We feel that's going to be a safe way to do it and don't feel that we need to close up all of Main Street to get this done. So that's the request, and this event will take place on the morning of May 9th of this year.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
Are you going to put out a next level alert for Main Street so that people kind of knows that there might be a slowdown and stuff like that?
Yes, it's in our plans to put out numerous public outreach and notices. There'll be probably be at least two or three nixels that go out. We'll do an initial one as it gets closer, and we'll do a reminder one, and then probably again one that morning. But there's also going to be event pages on all the school social media, on the city social media, the police social media. There's going to be press releases. There's going to be a swarm of information that's going to be put out on it heavily once all the final planning is done. And I believe we have another meeting, planning meeting, March 21st, and I'm not sure if it will be final at that point, but sometime, probably around the first of April, we'll start getting information out on this.
And the other question I had is with all the kids that are going to ride their bicycles, are there going to be a special spot at the school for them to park their bicycles?
We're still working that out with the school. One of the things we're going to do is we're going to do some bicycle safety education, and we're planning on having a bicycle rodeo that'll be run by Lakeport police officers assisted by CHP that's going to take place just probably for the elementary kids as we come into the elementary school. That's kind of what's on the plan right now. And of course, there's going to be public education out on that because you're going to have to wear helmets and follow all the directives to be able to participate. But that is something that's on the list to work out where they're going to park the bikes. And I believe one of the... Somebody that's assigned to work on that was going to check with Rotary. Maybe they... Somebody thought they had some bicycle racks or something like that. But it's all being looked into.
And I know last year I participated in that, and it was really a great event, so...
We thought it was good, and we're excited to do it again with the school. The school is very much wanting to make this an open, do it every May and every October, so it sounds like they're going to keep it busy.
Yeah. Any other questions? Would any member of the public like to address this item?
Suzanne Lyons, I'm here again. A couple of years ago, we got an upfront grant of money for a community transformation grant from Sutter Lake Side Hospital to do some kind of... To put together some sort of thing that would encourage healthful exercise in the City of Lakeport. So Parks and... They came to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we accepted the money, and we decided to do a walking path. So the medallions are all set. This is the walking path. The medallions are all set in the street, so if you are walking around town and you see those brass markers with the arrows, those are our path. The seniors, a lot of seniors from the City of Lakeport, would like to challenge the council and the staff and the seniors at the high school and anybody else who wants to actually really walk a long walk and walk our path from Library Park all the way up. It's on the sidewalk. It's all perfectly marked and legitimate to do that walk, which will be more like two miles instead of a half a mile, up to the school on May 9th. You have plenty of time to get your shoes and practice and be able to walk a couple of miles. And we hope to get at least two of our benches set because we are seniors, and we would like to maybe rest at least on the way back. So that's the thing that we're working at at our next meeting, is we have the money for the benches, is getting at least two of those benches in. Lakeport is a place where you can... We have several stores where you can buy good walking shoes, and if you start out on the small path on this walking path, it's only a quarter of a mile, you can practice during lunch and maybe work up to the two miles by the time this walk happens. We do have one person in our senior group who was in President Kennedy's 50-mile hike back in the day. So he's going to do it. He thinks he can do the two miles. I hope that some of you will join us and join the high schools.
Thank you. Good idea. Yeah. Got to up the game there. May have to get my walking shoes on. Any other member of the public? Not will bring it back to council for a motion?
I make a motion to move to authorize the chief of police and public works director to close portions of North High Street, Lake Shore Boulevard, Geiselman Street, Sire Street, Lang Street, and also conduct traffic controls at other intersections along the route between the 1800 block of North High Street and the Lakeport Unified School District campuses on Lang Street on the morning of May 9th, 2018.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And let's see. The next item on our agenda is consideration of the resolution of the City Council supporting the City of Lakeport's application to the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Communities Facilities Loans and Grant Program. Our urgency item for...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, today we received notice that we were granted an award from USDA for funds for our police vehicle. We're actually explaining to you a little bit more what the vehicle is, but it will pay for about two-thirds of the vehicle cost of the $45,000. It's a special vehicle, which I'll give... Let me explain what that is. But we're very excited about that. But the reason it's emergency like David said, it was...
The guy with the gun.
Was that they only gave us 10 days to send all the resolution and the signatures in, so we had to bring it up today. But we're really excited about the opportunity to get funded for this item.
Thank you, Margaret. Yeah, just a little bit more information. So we applied to the USDA some months ago for this vehicle. It's going to be a Chevy Tahoe, four-wheel drive, fully marked, command, instant command type vehicle. And we did not have one like that in our fleet, and USDA has monies available for things like that. So we decided to put in for the grant, and then we projected actually a little bit more money in our car budget. I actually thought we were going to get significantly less than the 45 grand. I thought maybe 30 grand at tops. So this is... Really puts us in good shape to be... To get that vehicle and also be within our current budget, so... And it will be used as a patrol vehicle as well. It'll be driven by a supervisor, a sergeant, but it will have a lot of other special equipment for instant command, and it'll be a higher clearance vehicle, so if we need to get through water and things like that, we'll have easier time with the regular cars. So we're excited about it, and we want to get it moving so we can get that money from USDA and get it ordered. We have already... The bids are all... Have all been gotten from the vendors, so we're just waiting for all the paperwork approval to get it done. Thank you.
Great. Council have any questions? Any member of the public here to comment? No, bring back for discussion the motion.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2655 of the City Council of the City of Lakeport supporting the City of Lakeport's application to the USDA Rural Development Communities Facilities Loan and Grant Program.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the... Go to calendar. City Council Communications. Margaret? Nothing further? David?
No report?
No report.
Chief?
I just got to mention there was another mountain lion sighting today. It was actually not in the city limits, but I was notified of it by fishing gang who investigated it because it's not that far from the school. And last year, we did have several mountain lion, I think four sightings in the city limits, and two of them were reported at the school. So we're obviously trying to stay vigilant of that, but it's really not uncommon. We live in a rural area. There are a lot of mountain lions around. Anywhere there's deer, there's mountain lions. That's their primary food source, so they will be close to the city unfortunately. And we just want to keep everybody... Advise everybody to stay vigilant, and of course, we did notice by the superintendent as soon as we got notified by the school and so that she could be aware of the information as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
I just wanted to quickly announce that we're reinstituting our business site visits here coming up that management staff has done in years past. This year, we're bringing on LEEDAC also with us, and so we'll be starting that at the end of next week and then kind of doing that continuously through the spring to visit every single City of Lakeport business and kind of as a measure of implementing our economic development strategic plan, kind of reaching out to businesses and seeing what services and other things that they provide. So we're going to start that here. That's next week, correct? At the end of next week? So just wanted to let the council know, and we'll be getting some press releases and some other information out on that here soon as well.
Great. Thank you. Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Spurrt?
No, no report.
Councilmember Parlet?
Well, I just wanted to report that I've been in conversations with the city manager, Margaret, and talked to the head of the Chamber of Commerce, and one of the things that was done over the years through the chamber, but I've talked to Margaret about city sponsoring and 59 Minutes to a Better Business. As a proactive approach to helping businesses locally and regionally, we're trying to coordinate monthly training meetings for every aspect of marketing that you could even imagine, from old-fashioned marketing to online marketing to social media. All of those topics will be covered over the next... Hopefully, we'll start that in the next month or two. And Margaret's on board, as is the Main Street Association and Chamber of Commerce, so we're just putting together the dates, and I think it'll fit together well with your visits. And I think the main thing that we all need to do is to bring a friend, particularly friends that need help with sales and marketing, and it's not what everybody thinks it is. It's a lot bigger than that, and I think the more they learn about it, the more they'll realize how much more there is to learn, and I think it's going to be a really exciting odyssey for a lot of people. We're hoping to start that in the next four to six weeks, hopefully.
Great. Is that open to any businesses?
Yeah, well, that's... We're just trying to help Lake County, you know, and the city is in the county. It's something that we're going to work together with the chamber, which is the Lake County Chamber, and the City of Lakeport Main Street Association. So I think we would provide a menu and other ancillary needs that maybe come forward, but it's pretty reasonable because the whole idea of 59 minutes is everybody says they're too busy, and so we don't want it to be an hour. We want it to be 59 minutes so they can get in and get out, and they can't use the excuse, "Oh, I'm so busy, I can't do it." And we're going to make it so easy that no one can say no to it unless they're just foolish.
Yeah, I've gone to a couple of the ones we've flown. It's a great job. It's really amazing, and we really appreciate Councilman Parlet volunteering his time to bring this information to the business. All of those topics will be covered over the next, hopefully, we'll start that in the next month or two. And Margaret's on board, as is the Main Street Association and Chamber of Commerce, so we're just putting together the dates, and I think it'll fit together well with your visits. And I think the main thing that we all need to do is to bring a friend, particularly friends that need help with sales and marketing, and it's not what everybody thinks it is. It's, it's a lot bigger than that, and I think the more they learn about it, the more they'll realize how much more there is to learn, and I think it's gonna be a really exciting odyssey for a lot of people. We're hoping to start that in the next four to six weeks, hopefully.
Great. Is that open to any businesses?
Yeah, well, that's, we're, we're just trying to help Lake County, you know, and the city is in the county. It's, it's something that we're gonna work together with the chamber, which is the Lake County Chamber and the City of, Lakeport Main Street Association. So I, I think we would provide a menu and other ancillary needs that maybe come forward. But it's pretty reasonable because the whole idea of 59 minutes is, everybody says they're too busy, and so we don't want it to be an hour. We want it to be 59 minutes so they can get in and get out, and they can't use the excuse, "Oh, I'm so busy, I can't do it." And we're gonna make it so easy that no one can say no to it unless they're just foolish.
Yeah, I've gone to a couple of the ones before, and it's, it's a great job. It's really amazing that, you know, and really appreciate Councilman Parlet volunteering his time to, you know, bring this information to the businesses with this experience, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Medina?
No report.
You're approved, Dan?
No report.
My only announcement is this Friday will be my first meeting leading as the president of the League of California Cities Regional Division, and I sincerely hope I get there. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Just remember, shake with the right hand.